Could I have everyone's attention, please? We're going to begin. This is calling for the beginning of March 5th at Northwest School. And if everyone can please stand to say the congratulations in class. We're going to get them.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God and is the freedom of the people.
I'm going to read our Leinster School Committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leinster public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leinster. With that being said, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the committee? Please come up to the microphone over here. State your name and address. Once again, if there's anyone who would like to address the school committee during public comment. And one last time, is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? Okay, this portion of the meeting is closed. We're going to move on to communications superintendent. There are no communications this evening? Thank you. And then we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Northwest, Mr. Ramoni, Ms. Coska, staff and students, families who are hosting us at Northwest. It's nice to get back into a school and facilitate one of these meetings. I want to acknowledge and recognize and share our community's concern regarding school safety. The outpouring for answers, suggestions, and actions have been clearly communicated and reviewed with members of the Safety Task Force. Chief Bullman and I communicate daily over the current efforts and the continued supports to provide safety in all of our schools. Currently, as I hope your children have been speaking with you at home, staff and students are engaged in active drills with police presence. Continued lessons and conversations are happening in every classroom and with staff at various levels. We continue to review resources which could be helpful should a horrific event occur. Along with other city departments, I will continue to provide as much possible information in order to be transparent. And our hearts go out for all the families and communities and school members that have had to endure. I also want to acknowledge all the school-based events that have helped our students thrive in the past week. Between the icicle ball, the theater festival, greatest escape family challenge, robotics, LEF nominations, community readers, Google presentations on cyber safety, and athletics on all levels, on and on it went last week. And I'm so proud that students were still able to engage and persevere. Lastly, we want to welcome and invite anybody in the community to participate. You'll see these sheets all around our city where we get to celebrate not only community but educational greatness that surrounds us. There's a dinner on March 23rd at the Doubletree, and we would love to have more attendance. Also, this evening for the school committee, there is an updated calendar of events that has been provided to you. So should you have the time and the availability, please get into our schools because right now there is much to be learned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. So at this point, we're going to move on to our presentation. Mr. Ramoni and Northwest, looking forward to this.
No pressure?
No pressure. We know it'll be great.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Northwest. We're excited to have you. When I first saw the school committee calendar, I realized that our date got pushed back a month. I was so disappointed. But I'm very happy that you're here in March, that you're able to come. We, I hope to move along what we have. Superintendent Deacon was gracious enough to allow me an hour and a half for my presentation.
I'm timing you.
All right, now.
No, I'm not the one you have to worry about. So. So I do have a few things that I'd like to share. I want to try to provide an overview tonight, just a quick overview of what makes Northwest who we are. And then share a few things what our students say about us. And passing those around, those are some things that our kindergarten students did. And so while there's quite a few, you know, Northwest for gym music, there's also some academic ones there. And then finally, I'd like to discuss getting some of our teachers and students are going to explore a virtual reality technology that we're introducing to students and staff. So it's pretty cool, so bear with us and I think they'll enjoy it. Okay, just our population is pretty close to last year. We're down a few students from the start of the year, but we have so many students that come and go. I think it's a pretty typical year. You can see how we're divided up this year. We're down a few sections. Overall, I'd say our class sizes have stabilized from the beginning of the year. We're doing okay. Our ELL population has grown. We're at 19%. Where at this time last year, we were about 11%. So we're up about 53 students from last year. Our free and reduced number is up a few percentage points, but pretty similar to last year. And our special education is just about where we were last year. Staff members playing around where we were, down a few positions. We're hoping that we're still working hard to meet the needs of all of our students. Some of our kindergarteners thoughts, Mrs. Robichaud, Ms. Robichaud, and Mrs. Harmon. We're gracious enough to share some of their students with us and some of their work. And you can see at the bottom, there's a wonderful piece of artwork. But there, Northwest is the best because we love our teachers. This one, go on computers. So for, you know, midway through the year, we have students writing, not only showing artistically, but also writing. Go on the bus. Let's see, I like specials. This one, I like specials. So a lot of specialist classes. I like writing stuff. Let's see, I love to learn. Okay, so just, here's more that you can look through. I thought that just sharing with the kindergarten students is a nice thing. When the days are difficult, just go down and talk to kindergarten students for a few minutes or catch some attention in the hall. That kind of makes it a little more worth it. And it's a great, it's a great time. So anytime the school committee would like to come on in, feel free to give me a call or walk around, check out some of the classrooms. Okay, moving along. Some of the things that we've concentrated on this year are instructional areas of focus. Using data to guide instruction. We're working very hard to do that at the student level. We've worked very hard, school level, classroom level, of bringing down what this, what do individual students need in their learning? And how can we provide it to them? So we're using data to do that. As I said earlier, our ELL newcomers, big change for us. We've got a lot more Level Ones and Dusche's. And in the past, in the past, we had just a few of those students. Now we have many, many. And overall, just how do we meet their needs? Not just in pull-up sessions, because they are working with our ESL teachers and tutors. How do we meet their needs when they go back into the ELL classroom and work out what's left? So we've done some professional development. We're continuing to do that. And then that goes along with meeting the needs of individual students through action plan. Bring up professional development, you work on a particular area. Then teachers' actions, like you draw up specific plans for groups of students and then work toward meeting those needs of those students. And track those over time using assessment. Some of the enrichment activities that we, that we offer and have our students going through. We have Forests, who's grade 3, 4, and 5, that's collective. Band during the day and after school, that's for our grade 5 students. This is our second year of doing Youth Venture, our leadership team. Our classmates run into the leadership team, doing a wonderful job with their students. We hope to share more about what they do, either on our website or with our families. Also, we continue with our STEM after-school work. Last year, Sasha, he had an awesome presentation about the art school. And we're continuing our partnership with them. Very proud of that. And the Mountain Nights, we're writing a little band, Mountain Nights. We did one last, last week. We're doing another one on Thursday night.
It's sponsored by Title One.
It goes sponsored by Title One. Thank you. And then some of our non-instructional areas of focus. Big issue here, communication with our families. Not, not just how we communicate with them through our procedures, but how we obviously communicate with them. How we're trying to meet their needs in terms of language. That's been a struggle. We play the committee for a lot of us that have parent liaison, with parent liaison halfway our time. And that's been a wonderful issue. We have our hours standard, so three days a week she comes in the morning and two days a week she comes in the afternoon. She's standing on parent meetings, she's allowed board documents, we translate it, she's sent home. She's been on the phone. She has helped us in a variety of ways, increasing that communication. And she's talking with our classroom teachers, so it's not always just a language issue. There's also some help that she can do to us that we're deserving, so that's, that's been very helpful. We continue to work on strengthening our community partnerships. That's an area that we've done very well. We continue to do that. And then of course, we are continuing to push forward with student-staff safety. So those are our non-instructional areas of focus. Now I'm going to ask Ms. Coska if she's going to take over, if she's going to introduce a little bit of off the virtual reality and how that, what that may look like in our classrooms.
Good evening. I'm only taking a small amount of time. But as we go back and look at community partners, Fitchburg has been a community partner for us in this endeavor of doing virtual reality. We saw some of the things they were doing with virtual reality over at Fitchburg. And we collaborated with them to learn how we can bring it to our school. If you look at some of our non-focused, in-focused ideas that we've had around providing for our students. We're knowing with our new ELLs that are newcomers, Level 1 and 2, they straighten the need to go well for that certain amount of time and work with our ELL staff. When they go back to classroom teaching them, they don't pass it, they understand and they can see it. It's another story. So we're trying to figure out ways how to do that, so they're not just sitting there, hell, looking at us and depending on a partner that we work with. So this is some of the things we did. I've been working with my PRNs in science and in ELLA, and Julia Santucci, why is she in, grade 4? And Conesabale, grade 5, which is our science PRN. We just want ourselves to figure out how we can adapt this and bring this into our classrooms. We were lucky last year to have a grant that provided us with three sets of five virtual reality cameras. So we can start learning how to do it, getting involved, doing it ourselves before we prioritize our classroom. These two have taken the endeavors of bringing it into their classrooms and learning how to work with it. So they can provide feeding for our teachers in the future, in the near future. These are the research. These are the three things that we capitalized that was forward and forward again around what the benefits of it was. And it's collaboration foster social integration of learners. And that's just having students of all levels, whether they're learning specifically, whether they're ELL, ethnic background, whatever. It provides another way to be actively learning in a classroom. Not possible reality, it's possible in virtual reality. As we say, we like to study history, historians is even more, seeing it for real life. You'll see a little bit later on slides some of the things that the children have written about, after they were able to experience in the classroom. So that's really important. But, and increase with motivation. It was very interesting to see when we walked in and the whole class, they were there, the odds, the oh, oh my gosh, just like game and, and oh, this is so interesting. And everything around, you know, comes up between the whole, and then I guide them to a lesson. But just to increase their motivation and their excitement and their eagerness to learn was just normal to see. And it wasn't just our top students, it was all students that were involved, which is beautiful. And then I just kind of gave you the links down below. So as we see, the benefits that we talked about as a, the two classrooms and their students, is just the ability to engage in active engagement. And see it as well as that just sitting in front of a wall, showing a slideshow, just being in it for real. The real-life experiences, we can go to the National Mall and sort of be free, but that's more of our fourth-grade standard. So tonight, we're going to go to go to the National Mall. So some of these things have helped them, just helped understand it a little bit better when they're there, they guide themselves through it. It's sort of all learning styles, and that's really, doesn't matter who you are or what might debate issue, they're all going to learn and they're all engaged in the process, which is really important and motivating. So what we're going to do today is I'm going to have a fourth-grade lesson over here. There's two ways that we can experience this. One's a field trip experience, and one is actual learning and reteaching of the standards that we've done. So I'm going to divide you up and I'm going to have half you guys go over to the fourth-grade National Mall. And our students will take you through the virtual reality. It's literally five minutes, so it won't be that long. We're not doing 60 minutes, I promise. But they're going to take you through the lesson. So what I can do is, and then we'll have five over here, one, two, three, four, five, I think, over here. And they're going to teach you about the moons and the phases of the moons. And what they need to learn and how they need to fill out their exit ticket afterwards to see what they've learned through it. So if you can split you guys up, four of you guys go over there, five of you over here, or five to five. And then they're going to introduce themselves at the tables. Who's going to do the running of the event? Students, come on up.
Two buttons will adjust your sight, so if you push them in, it'll almost look like it's double sighted. So you want to keep those far out, outside.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah. And just keep in mind, at the end, you will be filling out an exit ticket.
So we have to pay attention.
So you'll be listening to these two students give you some descriptions of the places that you'll be visiting. And you'll have to choose your favorite and one detail about it.
Okay.
So these are my two fourth graders. They're one for each classroom in our team, and they're going to introduce themselves.
I'm Eileen, I'm in grade 4, and my teacher is Mrs. Santucci.
That's a wonderful name. My name is Eileen. Extra points.
I am Kay Tonner, I'm in grade 4, and my teacher is Mrs. Santucci.
Could you say your name a little louder?
Kay Tonner.
Kay Tonner?
Kay Tonner.
Kay Tonner, okay.
Excellent. Why don't we step forward so they can hear you nice and loudly, okay? So if you go ahead and put those virtual reality headsets on. Right now, you're standing in the National Mall, and Eileen is going to take it away.
The National Mall is a park in Washington, D.C., the capital of the United States. It is over 1,000 acres large, and it shares our nation's history. It is the most visited national park, and it has many buildings, memorials, and museums. It is an important place where Americans gather to celebrate our nation's history.
We'll now move on to the memorial. This memorial is on the west end of the National Mall, and it honors our 16th president, Abraham Lincoln. Abraham Lincoln led the country through the Civil War, helped to end slavery and preserve the Union. It was dedicated in 1822 in the Civil War. It's an important site for the civil rights movement, since many civil rights protests are happening right on these steps.
Now we're inside the memorial. Henry Bacon designed the Lincoln Memorial, and he wanted it to look like a Greek temple. This memorial includes three chambers. The center chamber has a huge marble statue of Lincoln. The north and south chambers have two of Lincoln's most moving speeches carved in them. The north chamber has the Gettysburg Address, and the south chamber has Lincoln's second inaugural address. This memorial is one of the most popular sites at the Mall.
We will now move on, on to the end, where it's, nice and loud. This memorial includes a memorial that is along the Grand Red Wall with the names of all of the Americans who died who went to save the nation during the Vietnam War. From 1964, the United States of America. This wall was completed in 1982. If you're standing in front of the wall, you can see your own reflection blending in with the names, which shows the bridging of the past and the present.
Now we're at the Washington Monument. The Washington Monument was dedicated to our nation's first president, George Washington. This monument towers over the National Mall. It might surprise you to know that, that this monument was almost not completed. Construction began in 1848 after many years of funding by the Washington National Monument Society. But the company went bankrupt in 1854. For over 20 years, the monuments did have.
Saying connecting, does anybody else say? Mine's connecting. Says connecting. I thought it was just me and I touched something.
No, it's not you. It might just be the Wi-Fi. It's connecting.
This first phase is called waxing crescent. This mean, this means that the moon is starting to look bigger in the night sky. If you slowly turn to the next moon, you will see the next phase, which is called the first quarter. It is still getting bigger and looks half full now. Turn to the next moon. This phase is called the waxing gibbous.
Is that a half moon?
It is close to a full moon, but not quite. Next, you should be looking at a full moon. This means that one side of the moon is completely lit up for us to see.
After a full moon starts to slowly look smaller. The next moon you, you are going to turn is the phase, the waning gibbous. Next, you will see the third quarter moon. If you keep, if you keep turning your head, you should be at the final moon that we will be seeing, seeing on our trip. This moon phase is called the waning crescent.
Like the Cheshire Cat.
After this phase, we can't see the moon at all, and that phase is called the new moon. Then the phases start over again.
Now, let's go through the moon phases again and see if you can label.
All right, we'll try it.
Waxing crescent. Waxing crescent.
Good job.
Next quarter moon.
Yep.
I guess so. Yep. This is the half moon here. Now we're trying to touch it.
Does anyone know what comes after the first quarter? And now we're up next. And after full moon? Waning gibbous. And the third quarter moon?
Who's directing the arrow?
I am on the iPad. And the last one we can see on our trip?
Waning crescent.
And what happens after, after all the phases get there?
We can't see, and it starts over.
It starts. All right, so you can take them off. So we've given you, in this packet, there is actually the lesson that the fourth-grade teacher is also doing with the National Mall. And then at the very end, if you turn, is our exit slip that we might give the students in our classroom. Asking them to actually label the moon phases, just as a quick little assessment after we've done this. So this is something that we would use after we've already introduced it, to kind of get the kids, you know, actually in space and looking. And the iPad I can control, does have different, there was a couple of different things we could have looked at, the different planets. It gives a background of how we know what's going on in space. It talks about the different astronomers and, you know, first people on the moon, so it's pretty, pretty cool. That was really nice. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
That was the funnest lesson ever.
I know.
Could I do, do you think we could get a group picture with your teachers? With your teachers? Yes, if could you, do you want to just stay there? Oh, that's nice. Thank you. Wonderful. Wonderful. Did a nice job. Did a great job.
Thank you.
Nice job. Wonderful. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Do you like using these in class?
They're awesome. They thought they liked it.
I thought we were going to do it in front of my own.
Well, they were looking.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, so before, we hope that you enjoyed your virtual reality field trip. And they just want to say one thing, all right? So I'm going to start with fourth grade. Where's my fourth grade? Come on, Ryan.
I'm Eileen, I'm in fourth grade, and my teacher is Ms. Santucci.
I am Kay Tonner, I am in fourth grade, and my teacher is Ms. Fontaine. One thing I like about virtual reality is that you can visit wherever you want, and you can learn facts about the place.
My name is Ryan, I'm, my teacher is Ms. Fontaine. I like, I like this better, I like the virtual reality because it's a, it's a funner way to learn.
My name is Yacine, my teacher is Ms. Fontaine. And what I liked about the VRs is that we can see like, it looks like the real world, even though it isn't.
And a big thank you to Ms. Blake, that is Blake 3, 5, and Mrs. Santucci, Mrs. Santucci 3, 4, for the time and, and help the children undoing this process. And also their time exploring and learning about virtual reality and helping our students. Thank you.
Great job, everyone.
My last thought, looking ahead, Northwest is looking to provide, continue to provide a safe and supportive environment. While continuing with our standard-based construction model that we're using. So I'd give you a little bit of an overview, and then go into something that was really exciting for us. I do have, I have a question, is there, are there?
Ryan?
The power of meditation, will you be able to send that to us? So we can have it?
Absolutely.
On the electronic?
Yeah. I'll make it into a PDF and I'll send it.
Send it to us, we can have it on, 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 you know, in our, in our, in our computer, please.
I was debating the copying, you know, and saving trees versus, so that's a good.
Send it electronically.
Excellent.
Because I want to see that, that list that you, that you had.
The research around it, yes.
And I was just curious, I want to see the links.
Perfect.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
Yes, thank you.
Cody or as well, Sue? Donna?
How many of those do you have?
We currently have 15.
15.
15, so 15 sets of goggles. Each set of five comes with a tablet or is with a tablet, so you can use them in small group. The 15 allows more than half the class to participate. So right now, a lot of the planning has been around students working in pairs.
And how, like the lesson that we learned about the moons, is that a package lesson that comes with? You've designed, the teachers have designed this?
No, it's, it's a little bit of both. It's the teacher's design of how they present it to the kids, and the kids present it. It makes, it is right there on the iPad that the teacher was holding. A lot of information right there for students to be able to lead their small groups.
Yeah, that was really great.
There's a lot of resources around that. YouTube has a lot of videos that are pre-made for them. Some are self-guiding, and others fit into a field trip where the teacher or an instructor guide you through the lesson. And you can see that it's important at Northwest that teachers tie what they're doing into a standard. So they've tied into a standard. And social studies has, has been a little tricky for us over the last years, because there are not a lot of resources around that. And the state is catching up.
And the state is catching up on social studies in terms of standards, but we're trying to address some of those needs in that way.
Looks like fun learning. Anybody else want to say? Oh, great job. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for taking a little extra time for us tonight.
And thank you for the refreshments as well. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you to our PTO for providing the refreshments.
Great.
Alright, so then we're gonna move right on to the HR report.
I'm actually really excited to, uh, present this tonight. This is a promise that we made upfront that we would produce a monthly HR report just to sort of denote who is new to our district, um, when they started, maybe the reason, are they replacing somebody? Is it a temporary position? The funding source? This document should be coming your way each month. The efforts of trying to clean up X two and Munis is not a hundred percent right now, but within the next two weeks, we should be clean to record all staffing and funding sources. And that is being generated by our HR team currently. We meet every single day to look at who we've brought in. We were at the school department, which I've come accustomed, accustomed to. It, it changes every single day. We're bringing in, taking out, exchanging, moving, uh, so we really need to keep a vigilant eye on this. Currently this year, we have had to, um, make some reductions in, in, in some deficit areas due to some extraordinary non-budget costs, which we do not want to replicate in the future. And one of the items, when we were going through this process, one of the identified sources came from, we recognized there were a few positions that had not been filled and we're a good hundred and twenty days into the school year. So we are using that salary to help pay towards other costs that we did not budget for. Trying to balance and, uh, level ourselves. As we move forward, uh, two B and two C sort of go together. Tonight is our first and just our first pre- preliminary glance at the budget going forward. We are using numbers currently from January twelfth. But when you look at this report, you can see we've had hires up until a week ago. Um, so we are trying to paint our first glance without, um, meeting with principals yet. They are coming on March seventeenth on a Saturday. They had no problem giving up their morning. They said they were thrilled to do it on St. Patrick's Day. Um, but we need to listen to the reasoning and make our adjustments as we go along. And we've, we're already experiencing where we should make a few adjustments moving forward. This evening, uh, in conjunction with Mike Stassen, the Chair of the Finance, myself and Glenn Frato, we are ready to move forward with, as I said, preliminary requests. This is just our first glance and we're trying to use the protocols and a procedure that is respectable and also reliable in order to make sure that we have a transparent budget going forward. Are there any questions about the HR report?
Yes.
Yes.
So according to the retirement board, the last, uh, meeting from August on, we hired fifty-eight plus six people, plus forty-one custodians back. Is that what you have? I just wanted to make sure we reconcile this.
So in front of you are dating back just from early January when I came on. I'm not sure what happened in August. I'm just picking up from when I put this team onto the project, but if you'd like us to go back to August, I can make sure that we reconcile every position.
Maybe it was somebody, maybe wrong information, but I think at the last meeting when I asked, it was a snapshot. Because I don't think anyone knows how many people are working here versus, I think the, the impression is all these people got laid off and, and none of these people were retired and nobody really knows what the number is, what the board is. So I think the question I asked is, how many do we have prior to the, the budget process that we have now? Now, I don't know what the part term?
Right.
But fifty-eight new people have been hired to the, uh, have been, have been brought on to the.
Which includes the custodians.
No, 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 no. And, and that's into the retirement system. And that's from the retirement board's meeting dating back to August. And then twenty-one custodians. So that would be seventy, well, um, seventy.
So then you're talking about those people you're talking about who were rehired after they were unhired?
No, no, these people are, they're right here in the retirement system. I'm not sure.
They could replace the people that, like, they say.
But I think we need to keep track of that.
Yes.
Needs to be the, you know, the recall, to replace someone that's here. There's somebody we started with. In, in, you know, July first, we started with this many people. And then here we are, a snapshot, there's so many people here.
And I think that's what we are doing now. We're trying to capture, uh, not going back and moving forward. Yes.
Right, I'm asking to us to, we should, we need a snapshot exactly where we are.
Exactly.
How many people we show are different.
Do we have the names from the retirement board so that we can take those names and look and see that we either did not hire someone to replace them or that we did replace them?
Uh, uh, that's not that level of information. It doesn't give that level of information. The retirement board just says they're on deal, they're now part of the retirement and the date that they're, uh, I'm sorry, the retirement system and the, and the date that.
So just being into retirement.
I think the HR retirement.
Okay. Yes, it will. We can capture that. Any other questions? Okay. So, next is the preliminary budget.
Alright, so, um, finance committee and the school department have been working hard to put things together. What I have tonight to begin with is just a little bit of.
Mike, because you need to be on camera, you need to either lift up the microphone or come to a stationary microphone.
Alright.
So they can hear you. I appreciate that. Well, everybody out there watching TV to capture it all.
Alright, so that's a little hard to see. Um, we'll post it, so if anybody wants to look at the details. But, um, in our school committee handbook, the budget is actually a four-part cycle. It's laid out. Um, I just put a, summarize it a little bit. Step one is the preliminary budget. It consists, it constitutes our budget request. That's what we're working on now. We have a draft we're presenting tonight. And that gets based on student needs. And uses our best available, our current best available estimates of funding. Then, as we get information, once we get the final number from the state, once we know what the city has appropriated and so on, then there's budget adjustment process, which happens over the summer. The final budget we are supposed to do is the fall. Once we have, uh, there you go. Once we have all of the details, once we know what actual enrollment level is September first, that's when we pass the final budget. And of course, at the end of the year, there's a, we have to report what we did to DESI. So that, and the final, closing the books. The next two pages. We just listed essentially our principles. This is what, uh, how we directed school administration to come up with the numbers. So we believe we have an ethical responsibility to operate a budget based on the needs of the students. So we asked to, asked interim superintendent Paula Deacon to do so. We have seventeen principles. The first, um, six are essentially philosophical. We are going to meet our legal requirements. Make sure money goes where it's supposed to, be in compliance with Fed, so on. Let's go ahead and go to, uh, two more pages. Alright, so I wanted to briefly describe how it is that the state comes up with our net school spending budget, the foundation budget and the net school spending. It's kind of a complicated thing. It's crucial, it, it determines a lot and it's, uh, takes a little. So, the first thing is this page, which has tons of numbers on it. The state has come up with a list of areas that they expect us to spend money. Those are the columns. First column is administration, second column is instructional leadership and so on. And there, what this thing has is each number is the amount you're expected to spend per student in each of those categories. The rows are kinds of students from preschool down to, uh, high school and vocational students. And then there's, you get some extra money for economically disadvantaged students, those are the last two. We are in the blue row, decile nine, which means that if you rank all the school districts from the ones with the fewest economically disadvantaged to the most, we are between the eightieth and ninetieth percent at the top. So we're not, don't have the most. We're in the sec, we're in the second ten percent. So there's a little bit of extra money there. So the way this works, they just look at our enrollment and they multiply our enrollment times all these numbers, which is the next page. So based on our October first enrollment from last year, that's the numbers across the top. Those numbers get multiplied times the rates on that previous page to come up with the amounts, all of which add up to our foundation budget of seventy-one million, seven hundred, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two, which is on the right. Now, I highlighted a few things. Our total number of students is down fourteen. We dropped from six thousand, one hundred, twenty-three to six thousand, one hundred, nine. But our, due to the efforts of the PIC Center to make sure that we have, uh, students properly, uh, categorized, we are up in English language learners and in economically disadvantaged compared to next year. Which adds some back in. Let me go to the next page. I just did a what if. Some people have suggested or wondered if maybe the being down fourteen students cost us money. So this whole thing is actually a spreadsheet you can download from DESI. It's an Excel spreadsheet. So you can load this in Excel and you can put in whatever you want to see what happens. So this is just a what if. I took our foundation budget calculation and I replaced the numbers in the top row with our enrollments from last year. If we had our enrollments from last year, we would actually have come out seven hundred, nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars lower than what we actually came out. So we lost a little bit for losing fourteen students, but the extra English language learners and the increase in economically disadvantaged actually bring our numbers up higher than we had. The next page is where the state does its calculation of how much we pay versus how much they pay. It's a little bit like doing your taxes. So the state has determined that in, in two thousand sixteen, Remminster has about three point four billion dollars worth of profit. We're expected to spend point three six four two percent of that, which comes up with twelve and a half million dollars in line three. They also say we have annual income from two thousand fifteen, there's a lag for when the numbers come from, of one point one billion. We're supposed to spend one point four percent of that, so that gives sixteen million, one forty-eight. So they add those two together and get a twenty-eight million, six hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy as what we can afford to spend locally in a minimum, based on these old numbers, two thousand sixteen property values and two thousand fifteen incomes. They subtract that from the total they got on the previous page and the rest would be state, except there's a correction. The second column, over on the right, in line thirteen, they take our required local contribution from last year, twenty-seven million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, eighty-five dollars. And the Department of Revenue says that our municipal revenue is growing at a rate of four point two one percent. So they apply that to last year's minimum and come up with line fifteen, a preliminary this year's minimum, twenty-nine million. However, they only hold us responsible for fif- for eighty-five percent of that increase. So that's what the next part is. Out of the, from the twenty-seven, eight to the twenty-nine, they actually do eighty-five percent of that. So they finally end up in line nineteen, twenty-eight million, seven hundred, forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen. Now... The next page is just in case anybody wants to compare to Fitchburg, because I've heard that people are wondering that Fitchburg is getting more state money. So if you want to compare, they have one point, their total property value is one point one billion less than ours. So there's a four million less that they can afford there. And their total income is about three and a half, three hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, three hundred and fifty million less than ours. So there's a drop there. The state calculates they can afford less, that's why they get more chapter seven. On the next page is where they put it all together and say essentially that, on the left, they've calculated that based on the increase in local contribution that they came up with two pages ago and the increase in the foundation budget that they came up with on the page before, in line five, they calculate that we can afford the entire increase. So by the formula, we would get nothing in chapter seven money. However, there is a minimum increase per pupil, which this year, the governor's proposed twenty dollars per pupil. Last year it was thirty, the year before it was fifty, it's been a hundred in the past, but at the moment it's twenty for this year. So the hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars is the, formula said nothing, so we give you this minimum twenty dollars per pupil. So that's where we come up with our net school spending minimum amount, which are on the right. So you can see there's an FY eighteen column, what we had last year. FY nineteen, what we're getting next year soon, unless the legislature changes this. So chapter seventy-eight of forty, forty-four million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And our minimum required district contribution of twenty-eight million, seven forty-five, three fifteen. So that's where we are as far as likely funding from the state and minimum from the city. Next up is a reminder of some rules we have and what we're actually responsible for. The line item codes for our budget are provided by DESI. And they are divided into, at the thousand levels, represented in categories. One thousand is administration, two thousand is instruction, three thousand is pupil services. And then based on Mass General Law Act that we've agreed to in two thousand fifteen, essentially it's the thousand level we are responsible for because administration can transfer within thousands without our permission. So we come up with the numbers at each thousand. That's our job. Which leads us to what we've actually come up with, the next page. So on this page is just a summary of, we put together the budget request from school administrations. This is based on where we are and likely increases in costs. So it's broken down by the thousand level. So these, these are the numbers for some version of these is what we would be building on. We've been setting an amount for each thousand and wages and salaries and expenses and everything. And I've listed under there our best projections at the moment of likely funding sources. And I've listed under there our best projections at the moment of likely funding sources. The details for this are on the next few pages. So the next page has salaries, the salary page is in keeps of retired personnel. Paula has requested a few additions to that, which are all reflected here. You can see what we actually spent in FY17, our FY18 revised budget. The numbers in the FY18 revised budget, as Paula mentioned a few minutes ago, are based on the January 12th news report, that we have a new one, so there might be some slight tweaks to that, corrections based on things that happened since then, but they're basically right. And then, our best understanding at the moment of what we're asking for, what we think we need to ask for for FY17. We have wages and salaries, and then expenses are the next few pages. It's all broken out by the DESI code, line items, set by DESI. We've checked to check the numbers, we're pretty confident, but we're gonna check them again. So these are pictures we've been studying, they're ready for that March 17th, so the Mass Principles. Questions we have about why they need this? The last page you should have is the non-net school spending part of the budget, transportation, crossing guards, broken out by what we have to do and what we don't have to do. We're required to transport kindergarten through sixth grade in district, we're required to transport special ed students, we have transportation under IUDs in district, and also have what we are not required to do, but currently do, is transport grades seven to twelve, this part. We're also not required by law to have crossing guards, we're required to have safety crossing guards.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for him? Sue? Is there a possibility we could change that March 17th Saturday? Has the rest of the committee been invited to go? I personally can't go on the 17th, but I don't know, it hasn't been brought to the other committee members either, I don't know. I know we had talked about it, you know, doing it during the night or whatever, but I mean, there was an email letting us know of the date.
So was that supposed to be...
I mean, yes, because I already have it in my book, eight to twelve, at School Committee of Seeds.
And I didn't know that, were you asking people if that date was good for them, or were you just picking the date and said that's the date?
I didn't pick any date, but we did get an email from the superintendent, I think it came out of the Finance Subcommittee, that this was the date that they were going to have the budget presentation from the principals.
Principals. And I think that's when she checked with the principals.
Right, and so I put it in my book, but I don't see it.
On what they could fit into their schedule, too.
So, how many people here can attend the March 17th date? One, two, three, four, five, six. So Dean and Sue can, go ahead. I think it'll be difficult to try to get all the principals and everybody to reschedule. So we'll look forward with that. If anybody has any specific questions they want to get to the superintendent ahead of time, to make sure that those issues are addressed, that would be, I think, really welcome.
I think the problem, the biggest thing is going to be just a comparison of all those numbers that are here versus last year. And I think that's how we arrived at that number of, how many people did we have in the previous budget versus the next year's budget? And even taking a step further, go back to the sixteen budget, and also add a column, what did roll in number one in those years? I think that's pretty simple.
But I also think that, you know, we do need to know that information, but we might have, say, one person who's retired, and maybe we could, you know, replace it with two people because of the, or one, I mean, I don't know that we would have done that, but, you know, salaries difference, you know what I mean? So even if you replace somebody who's at the top of their salary thing, and replaced it with one person who's at the bottom of the salary level, you might have the same amount of people, but you might have less in the salary column.
That's true, but you use some numbers to get here, somebody used some numbers to get here, to the salary, I mean, we do three things, salary, wages, right? We do expenses, and we do cross guards, and miscellaneous transportation. So, somebody ended in numbers to get to that point, right? You had to come up with some, we got numbers here, so we had to add certain salaries to that. So we should have a breakdown of twenty-sixteen, seventeen, well, seventeen, eighteen million to be able to compare those three years. And then add another column, which is enrollment, that's the easiest way to, that's a fifteen-minute process in the budget. That I use, and I think is really helpful, but anybody can expand.
I mean, I think the superintendent has been working very diligently on trying to figure out exactly, you know, how many people we have currently employed, and where they're physically located, and, you know, whether they're full-time or part-time, and who do they report to, so I think we probably already have a lot of that stepped down.
Yeah, now, I don't want anybody to do any of that work, I think this is all, this is pretty simple, you just add to it, and be able to figure out, and you're right, some people got raises, did steps, and you never just really think, you know, break that down to back.
Some people are coming in at a different step level than the personal level.
A full-time equivalent to what we have in the bureau.
And I think we've gotten that information, last week, we received some, I think all of us received some documents that had the breakdown of every employee in the school system, of what they're being paid now, if they're having a raise, if they're having, if they're a teacher and they're going lanes and steps, and, you know, if they're having a stipend paid, and then the projected what the FY19 salary would be. So I know we got that last week.
Yeah, I don't think this is complicated, I've tried to really make it easy so nobody has to do any work, it's just taking the information we already have and comparing them against this column, that's all.
So, which information is, can you say again what you want? One of the enrollments, you said.
Just take the budget information that you just presented, and just give us that, previous year, all, just three years. So, it would be seventeen, eighteen, and the projection for nineteen, and then add the columns.
That is what's on, yeah.
Right, and then add the column of the enrollment, that's all. So, because it's significant, when, this is what we tried this one before, is you're seven hundred thousand dollars short when you come up with, it doesn't seem like a lot of people, but when you add to that, it's significant, last year was almost, we estimated a million dollars that we wouldn't have, that's significant in the budget for size, that's all. So that information is, and then with the enrollment, you already got that.
And we have two years here, you're asking for three years. He's got seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we already have seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. No, but he was asking for, do you want sixteen as well?
I don't think you have to do sixteen, just, it would even help, I don't want anybody to do any extra work, just, you know, add that other column of enrollment, because each time, that's a million dollars. And if you don't get that million dollars next year, so if you shot that million, you don't get the enrollment.
Right, I think this year, the problem that also happened was, we were, had less numbers at the October 1st, however, we added many more numbers, I think like at least three hundred students after October 1st, which are captured.
Right, our actual enrollment is much higher than the state has given us credit for, foundation budget.
Yep, and again, I don't want to make any more work.
Yes, it's behind the year.
It should be pretty straightforward.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, we're going to move on to the Subcommittee reports. I know that the Policy Subcommittee has not met yet, and we will be meeting prior to our next scheduled meeting, so we'll move on from that. The Finance Subcommittee has been working very hard, Mike, do you have anything else to sort of add?
Sometimes, this has been, what we just gave you was most of what we've been doing. Can we talk about something to say now?
Thank you, so can you?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the following warrants be paid. Warrant thirty-one for two million, one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Warrant thirty-two, a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Warrant thirty-three for two million, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and four cents. Warrant thirty-four for five hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. And then, the warrants from the grants and revolving funds, warrant thirty-one for a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant thirty-two for thirty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Warrant thirty-three for five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. And warrant thirty-four for thirty-four thousand, thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for the Finance Subcommittee? Did you happen to review the minutes from the January eighteenth meeting, so that we can move forward? So that's been reviewed in your committee?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the December eighteenth.
How it's January?
January eighteenth minutes from the Finance Committee.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
We just made a revision.
You made a revision?
Oh, that's right.
After the February thirteenth.
On page two, they made the revision, on the top, we'd like the transportation policy to go to the Policy Subcommittee, because it is a policy, and Cookby Kate would like it on the record that he did not want to lose revenue, that we talked about, that we eliminated the key.
It was the February thirteenth minutes, that's what she stopped.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, February thirteenth.
There was a correction.
Okay, so then...
Can I just add one more? I hope everyone has their budget books, and you have some additions to give to people who haven't received them, which is helpful to be able to prepare for the March seventeenth meeting.
Okay, so, in on our front page, so this might be just an error, it said the Finance Subcommittee of January eighteenth, but you were talking about the Finance Subcommittee of February thirteenth. So, we need to amend that to the correct date for the correct minutes that we're approving?
It's February thirteenth.
It's February thirteenth, not January eighteenth. Although I do think that at our last meeting, if I recall correctly, we did not approve the Finance Subcommittee minutes, because you had not addressed them in your Finance Committee. So there should be two Finance Subcommittee meetings, minutes to approve, we only have one in our packet? So if you can bring that forward, so, and just, no, if you can amend your motion to the correct date.
I amend the motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Subcommittee meeting of February thirteenth, 2018.
All right, and we did approve that. So then the next minutes really are the general school committee minutes from January sixteenth. So do I have someone to make a motion to approve? Thank you, Dean, do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, all the, any questions or comments, corrections? All right, all those in favor? Okay, so moved. Excellent.
I leave, from my email earlier this evening on part of an executive session, I need to leave, I'll try to get back to you on executive session, but I know this is all, so, so if you'd also need to leave, or vote on one area.
So we're going to go right into action items, and potentially, I guess, the, do you want to vote to approve the preliminary budget guidelines, is that something we need to stay in?
Whatever you need me to vote on, I will be going on board, so maybe you can be by, I'm sure you have enough votes to get through all this.
Yeah, we do, but I just want to make sure that if you had something that you're passionate about that you're included.
I mean, I question whether we needed to vote on that at Finance Subcommittee, it's just a protocol, a guideline, I don't think it's really a voting item, but...
Okay, and did you folks discuss it in Finance Subcommittee?
Well, they voted on it, I didn't, but I just made the comment, I don't think it's a voting item.
So, there's statements of the principal, so they're not, they're binding in a way that requires a vote, but at least on the Finance Subcommittee, talked about them and agreed to them, and we essentially voted that we agreed to. So the statement is what we asked, so...
That says it right, they're recommended by the Finance Committee. So we're not being asked to vote, just to choose to.
FYI, too, I suppose, but I don't know if it's particularly needed.
Right.
Though if somebody objected to something on there, maybe that would be a discussion we should have.
I think that at this point, it looks like it's more of a practice than a policy. So the Finance Subcommittee is all in agreement, I think we don't need to vote on it as a full committee. But thank you for bringing it forward to our attention, so we know where everybody's going. We have a vote on a field trip, if someone would like to...
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip for the students to go to the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Motion carries. We'll move right down to establishing a transportation task force, and so, a little confused because we had a transportation task force, and I didn't know that it was officially disbanded, I thought it was just sort of hiatus.
Well, maybe I misunderstood, I asked you at the meeting back in January at Appleseeds, and I understood what you said, was that we would have to vote as a school committee to have it continue. So, I believe we need to bring them back, the non-net school spending part of the budget in the last piece is mostly transportation. I've done my best to estimate the breakdown of what's required, what's not, but we also have to look at, our enrollment has changed, there's a chance administration's telling you we might not be able to get away with only thirty buses next year, we might need a third or second. Now we have TransFinder, so we can put information together. So the recommendation is that we officially bring back the transportation task force, so they can go through this, analyze these, and make sure that what we're asking for transportation-wise actually accommodates the students we have, and has the cost for our work.
So, I guess what I would just, I guess my question would be that the transportation task force worked very urgently to come up with the best, you know, possible solutions based on the numbers. So I think that, you know, if the enrollment numbers change, and we're working with the transportation company to have a reasonable pickup and drop-off time for everyone, and, you know, it's really, the transportation task force didn't do the physical, you know, we'll do these six pickups here, and these six pickups there, that was, you know, sort of done in conjunction with the transportation company, you know, we would still do that process, so I guess, do we think that they're going to come up with other solutions than the ones they come with? Or is that your hope, or...
So I think I need Glenn to help me, I'm surprised I'm explaining this correctly. TransFinder, Gary Zimmerman volunteered for training for that, right? So...
Two members of the committee had actually gone through a number of trainings with TransFinder. What I dare say is, I found the input from that committee valuable, preparing for this budget, this school year, they didn't get to make their presentation until late August, and a very engaged group of people, had a lot to say, a lot of input, and some of them continued to work. And next year, depending on what budget amount we get, we may have to adjust transportation. This year, we're subsidizing transportation funds other than the general, we're still using school choice money, and members of the committee were of the opinion that in future years, that whatever amount of money were appropriate for transportation, that's the amount that we'll recommend be spent. And depending on the appropriation of the mayor and city council, there may need to be changes in transportation. It's nice having a group of people to make a presentation to this committee, in lieu of having a director of transportation. of having a director of transportation. And I think Michael and I, the people in the audience, would agree that if they're willing to put on the tie, is it okay for us to meet a couple of evenings to make some
You know, I obviously don't have a problem with folks who are willing to assist us. I think that what I always struggle with is making sure that kids in, you know, a ball age of students get to school because you can't learn if you can't actually get here. And, you know, that's been a struggle that our district has had for many, many years. And we've had previous transportation task force. And, you know, I think it's important to continue to be innovative, but when kids can't learn if they're not here. And we don't have the luxury of public transportation. We don't have the luxury of sidewalks off. You know, everybody's not in walking distance to their school system, their neighborhood schools. So it is, it is a difficult struggle. And, you know, I think it's, they've done a wonderful job, so I don't have a problem with them continuing. I don't want to start a new task force from scratch because that doesn't make any sense. There's people who've done a lot of work. And if they're willing to continue that, but I think, you know, their, you know, their job is to make some recommendations. It's our job whether, you know, that makes the most sense for our district or not. So I guess I just want to make sure that folks understand sort of the purview, which they've done a phenomenal job, but some things may be out of everyone's control. You know, certainly we get money from the Medicaid reimbursement and the, you know, mayor has always been generous in giving that to us, allocating that to us. And we use it towards busing, but that's not something that, you know, legally is owed to us. And with the current Fed administration, the president and his administration, we don't know if that's something that's going to be continued. And that would be devastating to us as a district if that goes away. So there's some things that are going to be out of our control, depending on what happens on a national level.
So I agree. Ultimately, the decision about what to do about transportation will be our decision. I think it's important that we have, the information we have in front of us when making that decision is as accurate as possible, that the request of the city refunding it is as accurate as possible. So at this point, the numbers we have, I think they're close to right, but they're based on what I was able to figure out by myself with the TransFinder software and the input from the company and work of the committee. Plus looking at the enrollment to see if we're going to be able to get away with the same number of buses or if we'll need more would allow us to improve that picture and make it more accurate. So that's why I want to bring the folks back into it more.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions about it?
I think, I think, all things being considered, I think we do have to bring that transportation coming back to the force. Because like Michael said, and as you said, we're figuring back on everything. The future does not overwhelm transportation. We may very well have to present with a veiled fist to the mayor and the city council that the city itself has to fund the transportation. You can't make it pretty. You can't, you can't dress it up. You just have to present it. The city, the problem, will have to fund transportation. It's as balls as that.
Thank you, Ron. So at this point, Mike, are you going to make that motion?
So I guess, before I make the motion, I should make sure I word correctly. Are you, so the previous one, you said, am I moving that we continue it?
I guess I would like to say that we continue it. And hopefully all the stakeholders who've worked so hard and have done such a phenomenal job will continue to do so. If at some point we need to, you know, put in new members or something like that, we can do it. But I don't want to start from scratch and come up with a new task force. So it's going to throw everything out because that would be a waste of time and energy. You have people who've done stuff.
Did you say reconvene?
I would, I would say reconvene.
And find out who can come back. So I would move that we, we, the estate transportation task force to do the best we can to refine the numbers for transportation that will be needed for next year.
And, you know, for, obviously the numbers are going to be based on a lot of things. It's really trying to find creative solutions that they can really be beneficial to us.
Yes.
And that's not an easy task for anybody to do. But they certainly did a wonderful job. Second?
Second.
Nona, anybody else? Questions, comments? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Let's, so I don't think we need to vote to ask the subcommittee to review the fees because that's something that we're already doing in the policy committee. So I'm not sure why that would be.
I think I would, strangely, I think the stuff is maybe lost in translation here. Stuff with fees came up in the finance committee. Obviously, that's not our purview, the, that's policy. So charged fees will have a reason if we don't. So at the moment, I did not include fees in what I wrote, just in case that was not presuming anything.
That is something. Sure, and that's something that the policy committee has been working on. And we were waiting, there's fees for student activities, there's fees for busing, there's lots of different fees. We were waiting on some numbers. We got them recently and will continue to work on that in the finance committee. And for those, Ron and Isabel, is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
Then I can get you back to what you were saying. You know, you were saying about the policy meeting. The next policy meeting that's written in here, today is the, today is the, today is the fifth, right? Policy isn't meeting till the 19th.
Till the 19th, yeah, because we need the second meeting of every month.
Is there anything that forbids us from meeting since we got law on our plate that's developing?
We certainly, there's nothing that.
Yes, no, maybe, perhaps.
Right, so there's nothing that forbids us, but since the chair of the policy committee is not here tonight, I think we need to wait. But certainly, we can schedule and post meeting, more meetings if we need to. So let's see what we get accomplished on the March 19th meeting. And we may need to then subsequently have another one. But I know in April, lots of times we miss our meeting because of school vacation week. So maybe we'll add one in April. Will make this most sense? So I don't think that's something we need to vote on because that's something we're already doing. We need to vote to approve the fiscal year 19 calendar. Can I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for FY 19 calendar.
Excellent. Do, I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussions? Nona?
Yeah, I'm concerned with June and that graduation is listed for the eighth and wondering why, graduation has always been the first Saturday in June, which is June 1st. Wondering why that was changed? And the fact that if you have it on the eighth and if we don't have any snow days, you're getting out of school on the 13th, which does not give what I feel is a lengthy enough time to have the underclassmen be prepared for their final exams. Because the week, usually the week after graduation, you're doing cleanup work on graduation and the seniors' grades and transcripts and things like that, that having worked it, I honestly feel there's not enough time there. And would like to recommend that you go back to June 1st being graduation and not June 8th if you're going to keep with the 13th as the last day of school.
I would imagine it has something to do with the number of days.
You're actually right. I actually looked at it and thought the first Saturday was the eighth, according to the calendar. So it is the first because it's always the first.
Yeah, it's usually.
First is Saturday.
Right, and the law is 10 days.
Yeah, but I looked at this and I saw, oh, the first Saturday is the eighth. So I'll change it back.
Okay.
So as long as it's changed back to the first, I have no problem with the calendar.
Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, all those in favor with that change? Anybody opposed? Motion carries? Okay, and let's see. I don't believe there's any other action items. Onto new and old business, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. One is, Ron, I wanted to give you a brief opportunity to talk about the conference that you went to.
Oh, there was two conferences. I went to the first one, I think I told you about, I asked about. I'm still waiting for the PowerPoint presentation. The other conference I went to was last Monday and I had.
You sent that to us.
Okay. And the reason why I sent it to you guys, I wanted you to pay particular attention to the names of those people because we're going to be hearing more of them than less of them. One of the guys who spoke, he was right in the midst of things that happened in Florida at the, at the concert, I believe, or the dance thing. He was right in the middle of everything. And he gave us a bird's eye view of everything that was happening, that a lot of the planning that had been done didn't succeed because everything was happening at hyperspeed and things that were occurring, they hadn't thought of. But as soon as they give me some PowerPoints that I've asked for, I'm going to pass it on to everyone and I'll put it on the website so everybody can see it. The other part of the picture is that one of the names on that, that, that stuff that I sent out, the last name, Hanny, she's going to be talking March 13th. And I was hoping to go and see her again, but March 13th, we have, we have a scoop to do, so I'm going to miss her. But she was going to be talking on what she talked about at that conference, human trafficking. And it's a very big issue and I think we need to be, go ahead.
Ronnie, I just want to clarify that March 13th meeting is a finance committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
So you can attend if you want.
All right. Okay, I correct myself, okay, guys? And I think it might be wise, with your, with your permission, obviously, I'm going to ask that lady, is it okay if more people go to that? Because there's her presentation and the other, the other three presentations, they were very, very good. Their PowerPoints, they were scored on. And it's, it's a little disconcerting because as much as we like to talk about transparency and not thinking in terms of silos, again, silo thinking is very present. But if, I said, as I said, those, those four names, I'm, I'm asking you guys, I'm begging you guys, look at the names, Google them, you're going to hear more of them than less because they're going to be, they're going to, it was on TV, the night that I came back, the guy was interviewed and he was saying we were becoming part of a group against our will. And when he was talking, he was saying it was, it's one thing to talk about, but when you're there, it transcends everything because everything you planned for doesn't exactly work.
That's sleeping, that's my amendment, right? All right, thank you, Ron, I appreciate it and thank you for going to this.
And I'm also, I don't mean to interrupt, I am going to the poverty conference Friday.
Excellent.
And again, I'll be begging for PowerPoints from them and I would be able to pass it on to you guys.
Yeah, you do a great job of making sure you share all that information, so we do appreciate it. Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is I know that there was a conflict of interest training recently. I was unable to go, but I do take a conflict of interest training at work and online. So that was just done. So in that spirit, I wanted folks, I know there's a few people here that have some conflict of interest and I think it's important for us to disclose that. And I'll start, and I have no idea if it will be a conflict of interest this year, but occasionally my husband does like the scoreboard or the books or whatever for various sporting events. Sometimes he gets paid, sometimes he doesn't. It's not anything that we ever actually vote on and he's not part of the budget process at all, but he does do that occasionally. So with that, would anybody else like to please make a statement to the public?
Yeah, just, mind you again, my wife is a teacher at Lomond High School. I'll have to take that into account, step away from something.
Right, so there's times that you may recuse yourself from voting on certain items and discussing. Excellent, thank you. Isabel?
My mother is a teacher at Francis Drake and my sister has been asked to be a substitute during the summer months when she's not a full-time student at Worcester State. So on certain issues, I'll have to recuse myself as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else who has a conflict of interest?
Just, I, I felt in the past, if there was anything relating to the electrical at CTE where my grandson's in that and he lives with us, that I'd recuse myself from that. But from what I learned at that training, because he's a grandson, I don't necessarily have to recuse myself. So I just want to make that out there.
Good. Ron?
My son, Mattsy, he provides liquids and foods to the athletes, all the athletes. He's been doing it since he was in the Navy and I don't have anything to do with it. He's there at all times, but you know, I've already told him, it's like all I wrote out the thing, you know, but that's it.
I have some new business also.
Okay, let's just make sure nobody else has anything. Siroco, do you have anything to disclose since you're the last two? If you only left hour. No conflicts.
I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. So moving on, Isabel?
So on Saturday, I had the privilege of working the 2018 preliminary round of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival competition at LHS. So if you don't know festival, I participated for three years when I was in high school. It's when seven or eight other high schools come to LHS, we host them, provide food, all that kinds of stuff, and we watch theater all day long. It's very competitive. You have 40 minutes or less to perform, five minutes or less to set up a set and break down your set. And so it was a fantastic day and I'm so happy to announce that Lomond High School moved on to the semifinal round. And I also have some names of some all-star students who received awards on Saturday. So they performed Forgotten, which is an adaptation of the classic Peter Pan story. So congratulations to Julia McFarland for her role as young Wendy, PJ Doherty for his role as O'Connor, Ryan Hartman for his role as Peter, Marilyn Wilson for her role as Tabitha Now. And for the technical aspect, congratulations to Rebecca Lambert, Aaron Doyle, Rebecca Sauer for set design, and Natalie Dombrowski, Ryan Hartman, Rebecca Lambert, and Leila Kuciara for costume design. So they will be moving to the semifinal round. Hopefully, they will be going to Boston and perform on the John Hancock Theater. If anyone has time this week, Tuesday and Thursday, they're performing at 7:00. It's a public performance, it's 40 minutes or less. So I would suggest you go. Beautiful, beautiful, fantastic.
Congratulations to all those talented people.
I just wanted to mention that I attended the Icicle Ball and how spectacular that was. The Lomond Jazz Band is phenomenal. The voices, the singing voices were incredible. Jesse Balata Blackman performed. Marilyn's sister, Olivia, performed and a few others. And it was just a spectacular evening, great dinner. And I would encourage anybody next year to please join me. I plan on going again. It's a wonderful time, we had a lot of fun.
Awesome. I saw the girls' basketball game where they lost in double overtime, but they did a fabulous job and it was back and forth, very tense game, but the, but the athletes performed very nicely. So that was to their credit. I know we did get the information here on the LEF thing. I didn't know whether there were. I didn't know whether there were other school committee members planning to attend, whether we should try to get a school committee table together or not. So, are there other people interested?
I probably don't want to talk to them.
You already bought tickets? Were you sitting with somebody else or would you sit with us?
I checked with you.
Excellent.
Thanks. Great. You have to go.
Okay. So, Gina, it looks like we're going to try to pull together a table. So, that'll be nice. Thank you. All right. Wonderful.
And just one other thing, I know you probably have a, if you're a high school parent or incoming ninth grade parent, you probably have gotten a Connect Ed phone call that this week, they're starting to do their course selections. To please be aware of that and participate in it, they're having some assemblies. They had two assemblies today for underclassmen, three assemblies today for underclassmen to pick out their courses. And please be aware of that. The deadline for turning those in is Friday and I believe parents have to sign off on that. So, be on the lookout for that.
Great. Thank you. All right. If that's all, we're going to move into executive session. Nona?
I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session under Chapter 39 of the Massachusetts laws to discuss contract negotiations and we will not be returning. So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.